I'd like to call the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting in order. It is Monday, November 5th, 2018. The time is 9:00 a.m. A fair bite to Stanford's place. Pledge your allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Steve, can you call the roll please?
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Mr. Reagan.
President.
Mr. King.
Here.
Here.
Move to table business. We have an agreement with American Structure Point to help out to get our IT updated. John, did you look at the contract?
I did have a opportunity to take a look at that contract and I didn't see anything that posed a problem for the county.
I do have a question about, uh, I want to please come forward, please. You want to give your name and company?
Yeah, Andrew Everhart, Principal Consultant at American Structure Point.
On the approximate, on Phase 1, 2, 3, and 4, do you do a billing system like lawyers do where you kind of hide my switch you've been doing?
Yeah, yeah, bills as they go up as they go. And there's a weekly report that comes out every Monday morning of what happened the previous week.
Good. And I had been talking with Mr. Flute and he's, you know, willing to, of course, work with you and help you and all and, um, money-wise is done, but we don't have it in our eda plan yet, so. Is it about two-year program?
It's a three-year eda plan and the eda plans, oh, their program, I'm sorry, I thought I was talking about the other.
Yeah, Phase 1 is approximately 12 to 18 months and the Phase 2 and 3, let's say together, are probably about a year. It just kind of depends on what, you know, any additional issues might come up or hopefully goes faster than that. Usually the total contingency.
And then this budget?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
To bring me from the table.
I'll second it. Have a motion and second for a move from table. Steve, can you call the roll please?
Mr. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
I'll make a motion, we approve the agreement. Structure point.
Second.
Have a motion and second for the agreement. Steve, can you call the roll please?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. Next, we'll move to approval of minutes for October 15th, 2018.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and second for approval of minutes. Steve, can you call the roll please?
Mr. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. Next, we have presentations to commissioners. First up, they have Mac Heinz with Big Time Barbell. Morning, Mac.
Morning, commissioners. I have a little timeline to go over that kind of shows where we were at in March, the last time we met and received some funding from the county and kind of showed that where the funds had went and what we were able to attain and utilize all those funds. So, back in March, and the first part of this is going to be just, first couple sentences probably just be review and then I'll move on right through this timeline. So, in March, we received a grant from the county, the eda fund for opioid addiction. At that time, we secured a lease at a property at 2008 North Walnut, which renovations began toward the end of March. In June, we finished the renovations. At that time, we passed all the building inspections with the building commissioner and the fire marshal and received a certificate of occupancy. On June 9th, we held our grand opening and ribbon-cutting ceremony. June 26th, Big Time Barbell was awarded the Community of Champions Fund Grant. July the 9th, we held our first small group recovery meeting and small group workout meeting with the attendance of two. By mid-July, the meetings and the workout recovery meetings increased to 10-plus attendees. By the middle of July, we were recognized by the Delaware County Courts as a promised outpatient program for recovery. On August the 6th, Big Time Barbell awarded two scholarships, recipients that would receive free memberships. The prerequisite of that is to continue the recovery meetings and the recovery group workouts. That allows them to work out outside those hours and days. By September 1st, Big Time Barbell reached our one-year goal of 50-plus members according to our five-year financial analysis that was dictated through the Small Business Administration at the Innovation Connectors. And by the middle of September, our small recovery meetings and workout attendance surpassing the maximum occupancy of our conference room dictated by the state fire marshal. On that conference room, we had 22 was the maximum occupancy. We were averaging 25 on Mondays and Wednesdays. On October 1st, we obtained and secured a lease for an additional 2,500 square feet of building at that location. And also, on October 1st, we participated in a combined effort with city and county officials for the Surrender to Freedom, which vacated over 25 warrants and was able to get 19 people into treatment. Immediate renovations to the new conference room took, started taking place to accommodate the larger attendance. And on October 17th, we held our first meeting in the new conference room with partial renovations with 30-plus attendees at that meeting. That's kind of what we've been averaging on Mondays and Wednesdays. It's really getting some large attendance. We feel like the money that was given by the county and what we were able to raise through fundraisers made a huge impact at the very beginning and we feel like that our impact is yet to be seen. So as our attendance keeps growing, our member base keeps growing, we need to try to accommodate as many as people as we can impact in the community. With my estimates, it doesn't look like the opioid addiction's going away anytime soon. We asked that the county help us again with some additional funding. We have estimated our total renovation and additional supplies and equipment costs needed to continue to be competitive with other gyms and recovery centers upwards towards $27,000. And the Big Time Barbell, we have raised the initial cost for the partial renovations just to get us in that part of the building. We were literally packed in like sardines, so, of over $5,000 that we put, leaving approximately $22,000 to complete the renovations. We just feel the renovations and equipment are immediate need to continue our growth and success towards our mission. With the financial help from the commissioners, we feel like we can accommodate this goal. And Big Time Barbell, we're one step closer to a full recovery. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. I follow you guys on Facebook and you guys are doing amazing things out there. I've seen pictures where your conference room is completely full, standing room, or people sitting on the floor, so you guys are making a big difference.
Yeah, we greatly appreciate that. I too follow them, was out there for your grand opening and it's amazing what you guys are doing. It truly is.
Yeah. I would suggest to fill out another one of the applications like you did before with what you guys need and turn in to us and we'll see what we can do to help you guys. But, I mean, you're doing a great job out there and I mean, kudos to you guys.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I'd just like to say, Mac is modest in his presentation. Mac is here today not being paid by anyone. He hasn't taken a dime of money to pay himself or in large part even reimburse himself. It's all volunteer. It's all donation. The folks that he has here today are the same way. People who are running the gym are the same way, so there's nobody getting paid. And I know that firsthand because I was involved with the Small Business Development Center who put together the financial plan to make this possible. So, this guy's 100% volunteer and donating his time towards this effort, so we're thankful to have him in the community, so, thanks, Mike.
Appreciate it.
And some of your students, I know them because they went to school with my kids and I've seen them from here, and now I've seen them in your program and it's a big change. I'm in a very big change.
And next time you have a fundraiser, come see us.
Can we go ahead? Can he just make an amendment to the request form?
Johnny, probably have to refill out an application, let me.
I would suggest, yes.
Is your Board of Directors, are they working with you and not just lip service? Are they actually?
Yes, yeah.
And are you always needing new board members, you know?
We do, because we are looking to expand. There's a lot of, because we're still in this initial kind of starting phase, there's a lot of time that's dedicated to this. That's some of the things that I found with adding additional Board of Directors is the amount of time needed spent. Obviously, trying to find a person that has the dedication and that I put into this is would be a rare find. Most of the guys that put in the hours like I do are the guys from Big Time Barbell, so we do look for additional members because there are certain grants that the private sector would like to see, maybe nine or 10 Board of Directors, which is just hard to find those people that can dedicate that amount of time.
Have you been hitting the, kind of like the speakers? I know you have a day job or afternoon job, right?
Yes.
Afternoons?
I work days now, so.
Oh, yeah. But if you could get someone to go to like the service clubs and do a presentation and there's passionate people out there that want to help, but you're still kind of one of the best kept secrets around here, so we have to work on your PR maybe a little bit.
Well, I do most of the presentations for Big Time Barbell. Thursday nights, I do Rotary Redemption at the Tabernacle Appraised Church. I've done the Hartford City meetings. Most of the recovery meetings know of my story and Big Time Barbell. But you're right, I do, I have a family. I also have a full-time career and this is, I dedicate probably as many hours to Big Time Barbell as I do my actual family, so there is room for improvement and growth. It's just there's not enough hours in a day.
That's right.
For me.
But you're still, you're still kind of in your model stage and you don't have a model to follow either because you're starting something so brand-new.
Yeah. You know, I get people to understand that I didn't reinvent the wheel. The Center of Disease Control has spent millions of dollars with the correlation of physical fitness and nutrition to recovery. It's very unique in this area to the point where there's not a model to go by. There's not a template that I could utilize, so there's a lot of learning as we go. The initial planning and idea of what has worked great. We haven't varied off of what we initially said we were going to do and we're seeing a huge impact in the people that we've got. It's amazing just to see these people grow and actually start living and getting.
That's right. Brad, I'd like to suggest that we talk to Mac, see in Ball State what they can help you with, so that's a good connection we need to be joining.
We'll do.
Thank you.
Well, Mac, get your application for some funds made out and I'll support that for sure. You guys are doing a great job and I appreciate you.
Thank you, Shannon.
Yeah, Mr. Edwards with SRI on deed sale.
Thank you. I didn't have these packets first.
Yeah, I didn't see a packet in there. Thank you, sir.
All right, hey.
Who's there?
Oh, I love it.
Several months ago, the Otter's Office, well, they've been talking about doing a deed sale for years, but a few months ago, they, we discussed with Charlie Richmond the idea of doing a deed sale this year as opposed to a certificate sale and the pros and the cons to each, and that led us to here today, being here today. Janet Kessler from the Otter's Office is here. She's got a lot better numbers than I do, but I think the total number of properties that they've reduced down to is like 580 or so. The remaining number that was left over after the tax sale, which we held on October 1st, I think out at the Fairgrounds, was 666, but the Otter's Office has worked to pare that number down moving forward for properties that either had issues, environmental issues or whatever, that people don't need to be buying and ensuing the county, so. In any event, the number is down substantially. It would probably be reduced down a little longer, a little more. You're still looking for the list, Janet?
Yes.
Reduce it down some more, but right now it's at about 580. She has some tax numbers too that she would probably be willing to share.
Yes. The average annual property tax for these properties that we're proposing is $539.60 a year. Of those 584 properties, 357 are lots that have been in multiple tax sales. We've offered them to adjacent property owners, but we could not find any eligible adjacent property owner. 56 lots with no prior tax sale costs. 41 commercial structures and/or commercial lots are included. 44 residential properties that have been in one or more tax sales. And 104 residential properties with no previous tax sale costs. I've also, when we started talking about the deed sale, reached out to the general public and other interested groups. We got, we have had 33 requests just from us talking to people coming in the office and me emailing. Habitat has requested some, Eco Rehab, Muncie Mission, and Urban Light.
Of the?
Of the, yes.
Now, as you know, in years past, we've done a certificate sale at the Fairgrounds in this room a couple of years ago. And, you know, the purpose of the certificate sale is to get properties back on the tax rolls, which is really the purpose of the deed sale too. There's only a few counties that still do the deed sale full board like we're kind of proposing here. Wayne County has never done a certificate sale. They only do deed sales and they have great success with them. If any of the commissioners know, the Wayne County Commissioners, I encourage you certainly to talk to them because they, we walked out of there one day and every property in Wayne County was sold. I can't say that about other counties. That'd be a great problem to have here, but in any event, the deed sale in Wayne County has been super-successful over the years and they've.
What do you think is making theirs so successful? What are they doing that won't?
Well, I think it's over a period of time that people know after the tax sale, the properties that are left are going to be available to buy deed. And I think people don't want to buy a certificate for a reduced figure and then go hire a lawyer, go hire a title company. That intimidates them. They don't want any part of that, but they'll show up at a deed sale and pay $500 for a property they could have bought for 50 at a certificate sale, not had to do all that work.
So they get an instant.
They get the deed within, yeah. And, you know, one of the things we do there, we charge a recording fee the day of the sale so those properties don't go unrecorded like many of the tax sale properties do, so they get recorded right there on the spot so people can't get out of paying their taxes and they get billed immediately. So, it's been, it's just been super-successful for Wayne County and they've never veered, which is another reason. I mean, I think, you know, in the best world, we could take this list of 666 properties and pair out, you know, 100 for a deed sale, you know, a couple hundred for a certificate sale, a couple hundred to give to the municipalities or give to the not-for-profits. That's the best-case scenario, but Delaware County, like most counties, don't have the personnel and the time, the ability to do that. You know, the Otter's Office doesn't have anybody sitting around with nothing to do and I know the Commissioner's staff doesn't have time to do it, so it's really a bigger job than most counties and especially a county this size that has a large number of unsold properties. And, you know, Richmond doesn't do that either. They just take them all, they never veer. They've already started the process for their deed sale, which will hold in probably April, so, you know, that's, again, I'd encourage you to talk to any of the commissioners, you know, in Wayne County, if you have any friends up there.
So, the kind of the difference too is we pay for all these? Is there a fee that we have to pay?
What's the fee, Joe?
Well, our fee's $100 a parcel, which is for the noticing.
Okay.
And there's title searches, which we don't do, but I think they've contacted, which company?
Indiana Title.
Indiana Title.
Indiana Title.
And discussed it with them, so, but yeah, our fee under the contract's $100 a parcel to do the, to do the noticing, the pre-deed work to get these properties put into a deed situation with the county.
But the cost of this upfront, even though we might not sell it, right, John?
Right.
Thanks.
Thanks, good idea.
Do you have anything to say, or Charlie?
Well, we've tried a lot of different things. We did an online certificate sale and people bid on that and they don't redeem it, so you lose money. So we started doing a live certificate sale. This last year, we did anything under $1,000, I think it was $100 minimum bid, and anything over $1,000 was a 10% bid. I mean, we've tried giving properties, you guys have given a lot of properties to study wherever, and they're not ending up back on the tax rolls. And that's the idea, is to put these back on the tax rolls and, you know, we've got a lot of properties here that have really helped Delaware County if we could get them back on the tax rolls.
Several years ago, I drove by the unsold properties and couldn't believe how many of the vacant lots were being used. Some beautiful little gardens, some great play areas for kids, you know, unfortunately, there were some with junk cars on them, but they were being used and maintained by the next-door neighbor who was, you know, a plant of the gardener or whatever. They didn't need to buy those at a certificate sale because nobody was going to buy them because the price was too high. So, you know, this is a, you know, if they can improve their property value by buying a deed and not having to mess with, sorry, John, with lawyers, not having to mess with title companies, you know, it's just an intimidating process. If you go to the tax sale and you hear me spend 20 minutes telling them what they all got to do, they get glassy-eyed and they leave. And, you know, here they get the deed and they're willing to pay more to get the actual deed if it's going to improve the value of their property than to go through the process for a certificate.
So one thing we do need to do is get the word out that that property next door they'd been using will no longer be theirs unless they buy it.
Right. And, and there's ways to do that. Certainly, any kind of, you know, free press you can get through the newspaper about this process, whether it gets closer, because it would be probably April-ish, springtime before the sale was held. But, yeah, any kind of publicity you can get, and we can send letters to adjoining landowners to tell them that the property that joins theirs is going to be on this deed sale and they need to research it and find out, you know, which one it is and to come in and buy it, so. Because you get two neighbors that want the same lot in between their houses and suddenly the prices start going up at the auction.
Sounds good.
You have a resolution?
Want to bring it back?
We can either do it now or wait until we get the resolutions. At least you have a number.
I make a motion, we approve resolution 2018-029.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Commissioners have any further discussion on this?
No.
Steve, can you call the roll please?
Give it just one second.
Okay.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Next, we have Stacy Wheeler, Back-to-School Teacher Store. Good morning.
Good morning. Can I have a flyer or hat for you?
Come on, thank you.
Good morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, county officers. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Stacy Wheeler. I'm the Executive Director of the Back-to-School Teacher Store. We're a Delaware County nonprofit. We've been in operation since 2004. We are located at 1318 South Madison Street, downtown Montse. Our nonprofit has several goals in mind. One, we are no-cost. We are here to exist to ensure that every child in Delaware County is prepared to learn and succeed in classroom. We provide free school supplies to students most in need year-round and we do this through our local teachers and schools. We're about creating more equitable learning environments. Delaware County unfortunately has one of the highest child poverty rates in the state. We estimate, we serve about 10,000 kids in need each year. We service about 2,000 teachers through our county-wide distribution of school supplies and we have 700 teachers, individual, unique teachers that shop at our store each year. We're also about inspiring and celebrating teachers. We aim to provide high customer service to support teachers. We help teachers do the extraordinary things that they do every day in a classroom. We do this on a very thin budget and the need is very high of classroom supplies. We're in constant need to procure and obtain school supplies. And we, like I said, we do this at no cost to the families, the children, and the community teachers. And our organization is built on the generosity and commitment of individuals, businesses, elected officials, county officials, partners who understand the importance of giving back. We also partner with a national network of 40 free teacher stores across the country. Yes, there's only 40 of us nationwide and we have two in the state of Indiana. One is down in Indianapolis and the one is right here in Montse, Indiana. On behalf of my Board of Directors and myself, we are seeking permission to do a collection drive in the county building for surplus and gently-used items. These items on the handout that I have include such things as binders, hanging folders, index cards, pens, pencils, divider trays, office supplies, scissors, post-it notes, used books, legal pads, pocket folders, staplers, pencil sharpeners, and of course, we're always seeking, especially with Giving Thursday coming up here right after Thanksgiving, cash contributions. So this collection drive in the county building, we're looking for it to start November 12th through November 30th. through November 30th, and work with the custodial staff here in the building. And initial conversations have begun, and they are willing to assist us.
And, and the Justice Center too, and EMS, anybody. And, we appreciate Stacy coming down here, and we're not saying to throw anything away that is still usable, but we know that many offices, such as this office, they have to update, and things change, and get updated, and Stacy will take them off our hands, and her volunteers also. But, there's waste out there that we could prevent, going from landfill and also being used.
Are, are you going to put a box out, how are you going to collect the, the items?
Again, I'll be working with the custodial staff, and we'll come up with a solution, but I'm willing to accommodate however best the collection would be.
And, you know, because, right now, they have tubs, and Charlie, Mr. Walker did tell me that a lot of times when they pick up the trash, they'll go in and pull out some of the stuff, but we're missing some of it, and, of course, all the confidential stuff, we would appreciate being removed, and...
I'd, I'd like to see you put a box downstairs?
Okay.
If, if you can do that with, with our custodial staff?
I have a Gaylord box, which is enormous, it's four by four feet, if that's something that you're interested in, I can provide something like that outside.
Yeah, just get with Mr. Walker.
Okay.
Be happy to try and help.
Great, thank you very much.
Do you take pins that have information on them, or?
We are very...
I got a bunch of political pins, so.
So, when we receive pins that have certain types of branding on it, again, I'm very, our organization's very cautious with that.
Okay.
We try to distribute those items to other organizations that might be able to receive those items, and I could help facilitate that distribution if needed.
Okay, I just, I get a blue million of them, so I have more than enough, and, so, I just thought that'd be it.
Yeah, we're, we're still in the early works, so, but we'll be tweaking it, and, and we appreciate Charlie and his department, uh, working with us. So, thank you for coming today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to contracts and agreements for approval. We have an added fund application from the Montse Delaware Senior Citizens.
Excuse me, first I dropped everything just as you called. All right, good morning, Commissioners. I'm Rick Edmondson, I'm the Treasurer of the Delaware County Senior Citizen Center. I've been involved with the center for, oh, I think, three years plus, I've been Treasurer for two of those years, and in those two years, we've solved some really strict, uh, challenges on our budget, because our building is so old, and in, in decent repair, because we have a dedicated staff that does make sure that this facility is as best we can keep with the budgetary allowance as we have. However, recently, we've run into some budget items that aren't really in our normal working, uh, framework of the way our budget was supplanted, or proposed last year, so we're working outside of the box on this one. We have had, recently, a couple accidents on our property where our insurance rate was increased by almost double, and those were due to slips and falls in our parking lot. One of the things that we dedicate ourselves to is making sure that very unique and, and underserved members of our community, mostly elderly people, I'm one of the young ones, and I'm 70-years-old, and I go in the center several times a week, I spend 20 or 30 hours there, a lot of weeks, and my job is to not only make sure the funds keep flowing, uh, to try to acquire new funds, but also save money on the existing programs that we have in service. Recently, we required additional lighting in our parking lot, and we applied for a grant through Community Foundation, and we received that grant. We have, with that grant, money of $5,000. So far, we've spent $3,200 in improving the lighting in the building, and that is changing every single light bulb in the whole building to LEDs, which will dramatically reduce our energy costs. Also, it improved the lighting on the outside parking lot, which is where the hazards existed. Because of those hazards, we had an increase of almost double in our liability insurance recently. Our building is fairly old, uh, the new part of the building was built in '64, I believe, the old part of the building was in the '30s, and we can't use that old part of the building at all, other than for some storage, which is also fairly hazardous for our staff, because the building, uh, that is basically encapsulated is, uh, calling plaster, there's asbestos in there, I'm sure, there's, uh, you know, just all kinds of problems in a decaying building, and stairs going in every direction, so we can't use that for our facilities for our seniors, because it's just too hazardous. One of the things we've recently noticed is the ramp on the west side of the building is in poor repair. Actually, when the building was given, gifted to us, um, the Boy Scouts built a ramp that's existing there now, and it was adequate construction for a while, but it is not ADA compliant, never was. The railing is in poor repair, the ramp itself surfaces out of treated lumber, and it gets slick in the wintertime, and we're worried about additional hazards to our, not only to our clients, but our staff. So, with the improved lighting, and hopefully the improved ramp conditions out there, we will be able to better serve the community, especially the elderly people that come into our, our center. We do, we do approximately one fundraiser a month to help support the programs that go on to the center. Uh, we have recently had a gift of an AED. Uh, we were going to acquire another AED as soon as the money's come available for that, and then Rick Compton, who is with the Fire Department, will come in and give us training on that. This is all in support of a very unique, uh, position that we hold in, in securing a safe place for our senior members. I received three, uh, construction bids for our ramp. The first two were, falls under that, oh my gosh, I had no idea that this could be so expensive. But because of the nature of, the ground has to be excavated, the old ramp removed, uh, gravel base put in, and concrete ramp installed with railing. Uh, I've negotiated that down with a couple of the contractors, and have managed to get that total cost down to about $3,700, I believe was the last figure that I came up with. Uh, and that is because I talked to IMI, who donated the gravel that's necessary to form the foundation for the ramp, and also gave us half-price on the concrete work that'd be necessary there. The removal of the old ramp will be handled in-house, excuse me, by our dedicated staff and myself. Uh, we will dismantle, let's all just screws and, and, uh, boards that need to be taken down. The reason that the existing ramp has to be removed and concrete poured again is, even if we removed that ramp and only had the steps there, the steps that are going into that end of the building and are deteriorated to the point that if the ramp wasn't there, we couldn't use the steps either. So, those first two steps going in the building will be removed, and then a total concrete foundation and base and a ramp at a very low, uh, rate of incline will be supported there. The existing ramp now, because of the wood structure, has about a two-inch rise coming off the pavement onto the ramp, and it's almost impossible to get a wheelchair up that ramp. We also use that entrance to bring in supplies and take donations into a thrift store, which is a very large part of the income that we have at the center. So, I certainly appreciate your consideration, and I think you have the material that is necessary to help make a decision, and, uh, the staff, believe me, are good stewards of the money we receive, and we will make sure that it's all used, and hopefully that that will get us to a safety issue that we've been concerned about for quite some time. Do you have any questions?
I think you've covered everything, Rick, I appreciate it. What's your fundraiser this month?
Uh, this month, we had a rummage sale, actually with the supplies from our thrift store, and as, uh, I, I checked Friday evening, and we were up around $450, and we were still going in Saturday, so I suspect that number will be greater than that.
I think I did miss your fish dinner.
Uh, that's changed too, because it was a good one. Uh, that raised us about $900. We had several one pass where, uh, our food, our food services seems to do better than a lot of our fundraisers. We had a loaded potato dinner last year that raised us almost $1,000.
Is that right?
Yeah. One of the fundraisers we did last year, I brought in a, an actor from, actually, Ball State graduate, JR Stewart, came in and did a rendition of Mark Twain, and at that fundraiser, we raised $1,000. So, you can see, we're constantly busy trying to acquire funds to run the center. Unfortunately, it's never enough, because just like your own particular homes, no, no price of anything ever goes down, and so, if you don't budget it the first year, then, you know, you got to figure out some way to make up for the shortfall.
I've been out there on a couple of their, a few of their fundraisers, and, um, they, they do a lot of good work for the seniors. Uh, you guys do a great job out there.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve the amount requested, 37, 36.
Second.
Have a motion second. Commissioners have any other questions? Now, Paul, Stacy, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I hope you have protected our seniors, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have, uh, another calendar for the Commissioners' meetings for 2019.
I have, I'm good with it.
Oh, yeah.
I make a motion, we approve the meetings, 2019.
Have a motion second, Steve, can you call the roll?
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. Next, we have Ashton's Land Surveyor.
Kathy. Good morning.
Good morning. This is just a little bit of a formality, we have a plat meeting for a property at 8701 South 800 West, that's Daleville address. The property was in non-compliant, it was a five-acre tract with two homes, and we had to go through the process of getting it platted, and in the process, we need to donate or dedicate the road, road right-of-way, which is 25 feet, by 165 feet on the front end, to the county Commissioners. Uh, this, this will make it to a little bit more compliant. Any questions?
No. Chair?
No, we're good.
No. I'm good.
We need a motion.
Have a second.
Oh, so moved.
Second.
Have a motion second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. Thank you. Next, we have a course technical...
You have the mylar for them to sign? Okay, good.
We have course technical support maintenance agreement.
My name is Emily Anderson, Court Administrator. This is our annual contractor maintenance on our recording equipment. Nothing has changed, I just need approval of it, signature, so I can send it back to the company for next year. Email that to everyone. John, did you get a chance to look that up?
I did, I didn't see anything, um, wrong with it. I'll make a motion, we approve the agreement.
Second.
Have a motion second. If we have no further discussion, Steve, can you call the roll?
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we've got Bridge 268 supplement agreement with United Consulting.
Good morning, Commissioners. This supplemental is in response to, um, some unexpected issues during the demo process of this project. This was originally designed for a rehab, piers were in good condition, but during demolition, demolition, um, the center's beam collapsed and rotated the piers, so we need to replace those piers, and this contract is for additional design permitting, utility coordination inspection for $68,600.
It's going to move it back to, what, six months, or?
It won't start working probably till April, so it'll be sitting idle for 14 months.
Things happen.
I was out there after the, uh, collapse, and it did move the piers. I'll make a motion, we approve this agreement with United.
Second.
Motion second. No further discussion. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Next, we have Bridge 263 repair.
Um, this agreement is in response to, I got a call from the Sheriff's Office, there was a concern with the bridge on 850 West, just north of 350 North. It was discovered that a bridge was overloaded with heavy equipment, and it, it damaged in north pier path. So, this contract is to prepare a design plan for the repair, and we'll put out quotes, and, um, and this contract's not to exceed $4,000.
I make a motion, we approve the agreement.
Second.
Do you have anything else, Chair? No further discussion. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Just to let you know also, this bridge will stay closed until repairs can be made. It should be closed for at least a couple more months.
And, and this is one of our timber bridges.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I would like to add something else, different. Um, Angie says we have about, what?
Over 30.
Over 30 timber bridges that are out there. She was amazed, we, I was amazed. And, the problem is the, the weight of, of age, and we don't have any posting.
They didn't require a posting.
That one didn't, but...
Right.
John, is there something we could do to be aware, that the public be aware that they're aging and we can't, you know, just magically repair them all?
Well, I think that we do have a bridge inventory, have, they have been inspected, and it would be up to the Engineering Department and the Highway Department to determine if they want to post these bridges, uh, for a load limit.
I've been a Commissioner six years now, and we've had to close three or four due to weight, so there's just something we need to do before we can get the next bridge report, because the bridge, the reports aren't saying, but all of a sudden, something happens, and then we have to close it.
Well, then, it seems that they, they are failing because of overloading, right, Angie?
Bingo.
Well, then, then they need to post it.
My guess is they're overloading the load.
So, we need to lower the weight, or raise the weight?
Well, you can't raise the weight, because then it would overload it, you would need to post the bridges, lo, lower the weight, lower the, the threshold limit.
Yeah.
You can post those so that, um, and figure out other routes for some of the heavy equipment, wherever they are.
And then, um, if someone happens to go across the bridge?
The problem is, how are you going to monitor that? And how are you going to know who it was? We have that bridge up on 550 that was posted, and it collapsed because it was overweight, but we don't know, we don't have any definitive evidence is...
So, we need, we need more eyes out in the county, though.
And, I don't believe the county sheriff has anything to weigh, uh, the heavy trucks.
No, it, it's a, it's a conundrum, that just, the, 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 these timber bridges are over 20-years-old, aren't they?
This one was built in '83.
Okay, so it's, that's 35-years-old. They're getting to the end of lifespan, some of them.
Can we buy some weights for the Sheriff's Department?
Well, then you, you have to send someone to get trained on that, I don't, I don't think that's a possibility.
And then they have to drag it out there and, and stop whoever it is, and, and how are you going to get, and usually, nobody knows about it till, for a few days later.
And a lot of times, you've only got maybe three at the most, four sheriff's deputies working the whole county to take one off the road to, uh, monitor that, that takes away from the safety of the citizens.
I'm discouraged too, Sheriff, I don't know what the answer is.
Can you speak louder, guys?
I'm sorry, I'm discouraged too, it's disappointing, it's, this wasn't budgeted, um, this bridge was in, in good shape, didn't have any repair issues that were needed. Um, so we're getting little surprises here and there, and we're getting ready to start our next round of inspections this month, and, um, hopefully they won't find anything else.
Yeah, I mean...
It's very costly.
Well, the one that we just opened up, I drove...
Just a moment.
Can I talk to him? You want to come up?
Yeah, come on up. You've been and done that. Not that you've driven something over a bridge too heavy.
My name is Ron Quaken Bush, I live in Yorktown. I'm a county councilman, but I was a county commissioner when the first few of those timber bridges were installed in the 80s. And they were supposed to be like 25-year bridges, but they were very economical, and we were in a real bad financial situation at that time, and that was part of the reason we used those timber bridges rather than going with full concrete abutments. Some of those timber bridges replaced culvert pipes. They are not long-span bridges. I would ask the county attorney to challenge the engineering firm that inspected those bridges to be liable. If you were reading your reports, no problems, wood doesn't deteriorate overnight, they should have been able to detect some failures in that wood. Those bridges are only designed and made, they last about 25 years, so you're probably going to have to start a new program to replace every one of them in a period of time.
With these issues, these are, I've been out on them, and their heavy equipment's got on them and broke them.
Well, I understand that.
There's nothing functionally wrong with the bridge until the equipment gets on it. I mean, that's the problem with the last two we've had. I've been out on them both and been under them.
Okay.
And they're, they're just fresh, clean breaks that they've been overloaded.
Well, you'll just have to pass a resolution or an ordinance and put load limits on them.
I think that's what we're going to have to do, because...
If that's the problem, I just, I know that they're not, they're not bigger bridges. They're not intended to be, you know, wood deteriorates no matter what.
And we don't want to landlock somebody that's got a field, but, but maybe that semi just can't go down that road. They're going to have to go back to smaller trucks.
Well, that's fact, yeah. Just like in Michigan, they put load limits on all their roads in the spring. They don't drive anything or anything because of their freezing fault. I've studied a little of that in the past.
Yeah, I was up at West, uh, road school, and I'd never heard that Wisconsin makes some roads go one-way in that time period, so that the traffic can stay in the middle of the road instead of on the side of the road.
Yeah, it's unfortunate.
And that's not going to be very popular around here, but...
Sometimes as commissioners, you have to be the bad guy.
That's right.
They have frost laws up in Michigan, too.
Thank you.
Jamie?
Hi, Jamie Bane, Administrator of the Health Department. I'm here regarding our fleet lease. The fleet's paid for by state funding, and the state has requested a letter from the commissioners, basically acknowledging that you're not going to take the vehicles from us or assign them to other departments, the state or their department.
Yeah, and you know, the state board of account, they teach us, once the money is coming from your fund, it cannot go anywhere else.
I don't know if they want to reset it elsewhere, but...
Yeah.
I'll make a motion. We approve the agreement.
Second.
Have a motion in second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Jamie, I need to see you. I'll give you a minute, too, but thanks.
Next, we have New Rule, Tower Technology Agreement.
This was an agreement that is working with the police department, sheriff's department, and the towns there, the police departments, to expand the software. There was a discussion at the redevelopment commission meeting. I've had a chance to look at this. I don't see this as a problem. It, since it's a contract, it would be approved by the commissioners to, um, add technology to the towns, Yorktown, and there was quite a presentation made at the redevelopment commission meeting last week or two weeks ago.
That's coming out of TIF districts.
Yeah, Commissioners, Brad Bookout of Delaware County Economic Development. There was, as John had mentioned, there was a presentation, and there was a proposed amount from each of the TIF districts to pay the total cost of the, both the hardware and the software for the program. So that was supported by the redevelopment commission.
Sub move.
Second.
Have a motion in second. Have any further discussion? Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Next, we'll move the ordinance for first reading, ordinance number 2018-014, and ordinance amending ordinance 2016-006, materiality policy as to reporting to Indiana State Board of Accounts to erroneous or irregular material, variances, losses, shortage, or thefts, and creating internal controls for Delaware County, Indiana.
This was brought to my attention by the auditor's office. The State Board of Accounts was looking for an internal control policy. I thought we had done that with materiality policy, but the State Board of Accounts wanted something more comprehensive. So what I'm doing is amending ordinance 2016-006 by adding sections, new sections six, seven, eight, and nine, which sets forth the internal control provisions of the State Board of Accounts. It also obligates all those elected and appointed officials and employees to abide by this policy, and that the auditor is to provide training in reporting to State Board of Accounts and the commissioners of the implementation of this policy. It's to help with the handling of money, funds, that sort of thing, so everybody's on the same page, and the counties do it in uniform.
I'll make a motion. We introduce ordinance number 2018-014, amending ordinance 2016-006.
I was thinking that we wanted to suspend the rules.
Yeah, but we have to introduce it.
You got to introduce it first, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, second.
A motion in second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Need a motion to second.
Now, I'll move, suspend the rules, since it's just a cleanup.
I'll second.
Have a motion in second. Steve, can you call the roll?
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Now, I need one to adopt.
I'll make a motion. We adopt ordinance 2018-014.
Second.
Have a motion in second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Need a motion to second.
Now, I'll move, suspend the rules, since it's just a cleanup.
I'll second.
Have a motion in second. Steve, can you call the roll?
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Now, I need one to adopt.
I'll make a motion. We adopt ordinance 2018-014.
Second.
Have a motion in second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Well, since we've already did the resolution, we'll move on down to department heads and elected officials. One thing I would like to do is extend the CAFO to December 3.
I think the Plan Commission doesn't have a meeting in December. Correct, Marta?
That's correct. And at their meeting last Thursday, they moved to continue the public hearing to their January 3 regular monthly meeting. And so that would mean that it would be either the January 7 or the January 21 commissioner meeting.
21st will probably be done.
Because of the 7 being busy.
Yeah, and also, that is in line with our normal procedure for forwarding business to the commissioners. It's usually for the second meeting of the month.
There's still some work that I'm wanting to do on that ordinance. I've been working with GIS and Marta's office to get some questions answered, and so there's still some work to do on it.
Okay, can we give a motion to extend it to January 21, 2019?
I'll make a motion. We extend the moratorium for the CAFOs to January 21.
Second.
Have a motion in second. Have any further discussion?
Well, actually, 21st is the holiday. Do you want to make it to 22nd?
22nd, yes.
Which is the, the commissioner meeting day?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, yeah, it would be January 22nd.
You're catch, John.
Yeah. I do stay awake up here, though.
He earned his money, did he? I'll second, whatever.
So the motion has been amended to January 22 of 2019. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
And I'll have the official ordinance for you at the 19th, at the beat on the 19th.
Okay. Have any other department heads, elected officials?
I just, in line with what we were just talking about, at the meeting, at the Plan Commission meeting, for the people who were there, I made the announcement that we would place, we've got the ordinance online, but the mapping that was done with my staff and Kyle Johnson, the GIS department, we'll put that online as well, so people can just look at the different buffering and proposals from the committee.
Thank you, Marta.
Thank you, Marta. Everybody received a Ron Plan Weekly Report for wanting to measure?
Yep.
Well, if I asked him, he didn't put his hand up.
Baseball, I never know about.
I really don't have a whole lot to say. I'm Ron Quaken Bush, President of Delaware County Council. I live in Yorktown, 518 South River Water. Mr. Kraykraft, at our last council meeting, the auditor, Mr. Kraykraft, explained to us that the Board of Accounts is going to require new type of accounting procedures that could be expensive. He was going to go to another meeting after the council meeting, and he may have additional information, and I think it's a good time to be able to update the commissioners as well as the public on what this is all about. Are you prepared to do that?
Yes.
Thank you.
For counties that are over 100,000 in population, you're required by January 1, 2019, to go to, they call it GAAP accounting, but it's accrual accounting, instead of cash basis We have met a couple times in our office. I've got a meeting set up with an accountant. We're going to look at what it takes to, we've met with our supplier, our vendor for our finance system, and we're going to try to move forward with this. We don't know what the cost is going to be, but if it's not in place by January 1, 2020, you cannot farm or borrow if you're a county over 100,000. And so we're working to try to get this implemented. It's not going to be an easy fix. It's going to take two or three months to get this implemented, so I just see it sooner, and that way, if we have any problems, we have time to work on it instead of waiting to the end of next year. So as we move forward with this, I will keep the commissioners and the council updated on what we're doing.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Aren't those State Board of Accounts that all bring the money, are they?
No.
Oh, well.
Anyone else? Move the payment of claims in an amount of $2,182,247.17.
Sub move.
Second.
A motion in second. Steve, can you call the roll?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Move to public comments.
Good morning, Ms. Irving. 2120 East County Road, 1,000 North Eaton. Thank you for extending the moratorium. I do have a question, I suppose, concerning the timeline. I know Marta said that the one that our, that the committee put out, the proposed ordinance which is being looked at, is online. And then, Mr. Brook, you stated that you would have the, any proposed changes ready for the commissioners by January 19th, is that correct?
No, by next meeting, November 19th.
Oh, November 19th? Okay, excellent.
Matter of fact, I just sent it to them.
Okay, and those are like changes and...
It's just an extension of the moratorium to January 22.
Oh, okay, so that's that.
It's amendment to order 2018-004.
Okay. Well, I suppose my question is, will there be an opportunity for the public to view proposed changes before the commissioners would see it next time? Will any proposed changes be posted online?
There'll be an initial reading, and then we'll hold it for two weeks, right?
Well, what happens is, Marta has the, they have the public hearing at the Plan Commission, that's the first reading, and then it comes to the commissioners for second reading or adoption. Which at time, you can make changes if you want to, or not, or whatever you want to do.
Right. At the, at the Plan, the next Plan Commission meeting, January 3, which is a continuation of the public hearing, any changes that would have been proposed would be presented at that meeting. I mean, and I, I don't know if we'll have any or not, but they would be presented at the January 3 Plan Commission meeting, and then the commission would vote on what, what changes might be made to the proposal that's in front of them. And then, if those are approved to be incorporated into the ordinance, then I incorporate them into the ordinance, and that is the ordinance that is filed with the commissioners.
Okay.
So it, I mean, at this time, I'm not necessarily expecting any changes, but obviously, from some of the discussions that have been had, there, there could be, but those would all be presented at the public meetings, one in front of the Plan Commission, and then that would be carried over to the commissioners.
Okay, great. I just wanted to be sure that, you know, having worked on the committee, that there was time to review any possible changes for comment. So I appreciate that. And just on an unrelated topic, I suppose, sitting out here and listening to the bridge conversation, and you guys probably have kicked all this around before, but, you know, semis, there's a height limit, and I wondered if there was, if it's ever been considered that there was a height limit on a bridge? Because if it's, if the concern is really overweight equipment going across, obviously, that's probably so tall. So it would seem that maybe some kind of a height limit would help that situation. And then another thing would be an inexpensive, like, trail or deer cam at certain times of the year. So, I don't know, just a thought that popped in my head, sitting out here, but...
I've thought about the height restriction, especially on the old metal bridges. The idea of a cam was not thought of at all.
Yeah, because trail cams, I mean, they're pretty cheap, they run for a long time, you can kind of position them wherever you would want them, but...
Gives Angie something to do, go out and change the batteries.
Well, I actually, I think the batteries, yeah, that's all right, keep her busy, but I think, you know, hunters use them through hunting season, so they must last a long time.
That's a good idea. That might help on dumps, too.
Hearing the thought of that, yeah, just something else, maybe.
For down loss, yeah.
Yeah, but thank you. Thank you for your work.
Anyone else? No, I maintain a motion in recess.
Sub move.
Second.
All favor, say aye. Aye. Any close? Recession.